You ready Pam? You ready? All right, good evening everybody. Thank you for coming this evening. I'm going to call to order the Lower Paxton Township Board of Supervisors Business Meeting for Tuesday, June 17th, 2025. I'd like to ask Supervisor McCormick to lead us in the pledge.
I plead allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, before we get started with approval of the minutes, I just want to announce that this board met for executive session after our meeting last Tuesday on June 10th, on Thursday, June 12th, and prior to the meeting today, all to discuss personnel issues. All right, moving on to the approval of the minutes. On the approval of the minutes for February 18th, 2025, I would like to make one correction to the end time. Could just check on the stream. Thank you. Yep. So as amended, do I have a motion to approve the minutes for February 18th, 2025?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, all those in favor say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Approval of the minutes for March 4th, 2025. Is there a motion to approve those minutes?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Okay, moving on to public comment, and before we do, I just wanted to give a few reminders. Please wait to be recognized, please identify yourself, and please make your comments at the podium. Again, I will raise my hand at five minutes. If you desire more time, please just reach out to us ahead of time prior to the meeting so we can decide whether or not you need to be placed on the agenda. I will just note that the board has really given a lot of deference to speakers, and deservedly so. We've had a lot of important and emotional topics that we've been discussing, but the board does have discretion to limit repetitious and redundant comment. And just wanted to note that our public comment should not be disrupting any meetings. But I do want to thank you all. Thank you for being respectful, and thank you for providing insight on important township matters. And this only works if you come here and voice your opinion. So it makes a difference to us, and it makes a difference to the township. So thank you. All right, now moving on to public comment. Mr. Minsker, thank you.
Good evening, members of the board and staff. I am Bill Minsker, 5956 Linglestown Road on the square in Linglestown. Tonight, I would like to begin with one of 10 of my projects, which I introduced to you a couple of weeks ago that I would be doing. This project that I have to introduce you to tonight is the one that is the most expensive, the most involved, and goes back to 1965. This goes back a long, long, long time. Before getting into the project, I would like to state in regard to all 10 of the projects that these are my projects only. They don't represent anyone else's opinions. I'm not speaking for any other group or organization. This is solely something that I feel I want to do to suggest to you some things that I think you should consider for the benefit of our township. This project deals with an ongoing discussion that I have heard in regard to a possibility in the future of the township building, a new building at a new site, that more room is needed, and that sort of thing. And I'm addressing that issue. And also, the project next week, which also will be a project that has gone back a little bit in time, will deal with the same issue of construction and facility use of the township. I call your attention and your mind, in your mind's eye, to a historic building that we have in our township, unique to our township, at Linglestown Road location in the 4300 block, three buildings up toward Linglestown from Colonial Road. There is a building there called Fort Hunter. That was a colonial fortified home of the Gilchrist family, and I would suggest to the board that you consider purchasing the building and a partial part of the land that is offered for sale. The building is currently up for sale with Rothman, Schubert, and Reed. There's a big sign out front that you may have noticed. This building was built in the 1700s. It was one of many, many fortified homes that paralleled our mountain and the Appalachian Trail. You would be familiar maybe with the names of Fort Patton, Fort Hunter, Fort Barnett, and many, many others that were constructed to give a fortified protection to our early settlers. There is only one of these buildings remaining, and that is Fort Hunter. You know of, I'm sorry, Fort Gilchrist. You know of Fort Hunter. Fort Hunter is not the fort. That's just a farmhouse that's there. The original fort, Fort Halifax, all of these other forts that did exist, they're all gone, except for Fort Gilchrist. And the building is there. It sits right along Linglestown Road with a curved driveway in the front, and nobody knows, or very few people know, that that building has the history that it has. It's the only one remaining. And I will tell you what my proposal is for that in a moment. The second part of this is a little bit further toward Linglestown, also in the 4300 block, which is a tree. This tree, which sits back off of Linglestown Road at the corner of Linglestown Road and Woodview Drive, is the seventh largest tree in our state. It is huge. It has a 25-foot circumference, 25 feet. It's nine feet in diameter, nine feet. It's 110 feet tall, and has a crown, the spread of the branches, of 130 feet. This tree is an ancient tree. It's been there forever, and historically, we have records that show that the area's Paxton Township, the original big area that we're just a part of, the original final Native American Indian that lived in our area is buried at the base of that tree. So my proposals for Fort Gilchrist, the township would first have our engineer do a study of the building to see that it is usable because of its age, and it's been sitting there idle for many, many, many years. So it may not be in a situation that it can be used in the future. So first, there would be a study done. Assuming that the building then would be suitable for development, the township would buy the building and a small portion of the land that is available for sale along Linglestown Road, that frontal property. And then two of our departments would be moved into that building, the Department of Economic Development and the Department of Community Development. In addition to those two departments, which would then free up space here, the township's historical commission, which I think all of you are familiar with, has been seeking for years, since we started in 2018, to have a place to put all of our materials that we've been gathering. There would be a place there where that would occur. Shelley, would you distribute those booklets for me, please? And then for the tree, the tree's area would be purchased, and the Township Park and Rec Department would create a park there. This is in a floodplain, so that the area would be developed into a small community park with that tree as the focus, and in that floodplain area would be a pavilion, restroom, place for grilling, some playground equipment, all of which would be suitable for a floodplain development, and it would be called the John Goodaway Park, after this Indian, John Goodaway. Booklet that you have in front of you shows materials about that project. If you go back to the pictures on the tree, the first of the pictures shows that tree from many, many, many years ago, when there was no building construction and no underbrush around it. But look closely, on the left side, bottom of the tree, there's a person standing. And you can get an idea of how huge this tree is, now much bigger than what you see there. So that's my biggest project, the one that I've worked on since 1965 with the Linglestown Bicentennial. And I remind you of my 3D proposal to you with all 10 of these projects, that these are dynamic, they are daring, and they're doable. And I would suggest to you that you give some thought to this. Thank you very much. More next time.
Thank you, Mr. Minsker. It's very clear that you put a lot of time and effort into this presentation, and we appreciate hearing from you. Thank you. Yes, Mr. Purdy.
It's so tough to follow Bill when he has a presentation like that. I think it's worth looking into, certainly. And for my, oh, I've got to give my name and address. J. Purdy, 4731 Duke Street. And for tonight, during the controversy over the appointment of four acting supervisors to the board, now-chairman Laura Kurtz asserted the township must look for ways to make the process more transparent and credible. Tonight, I propose a solution that would move Lower Paxton Township toward that practical and efficient solution. Lower Paxton is the 14th largest municipality in Pennsylvania, the third-largest second-class township in the Commonwealth, exceeded only just barely by Mill Creek in Erie County and Ben Salem in Bucks County. There are 1,453 second-class townships with fewer, with lower populations than Lower Paxton. Our population is currently 54,000, and it seems to go up a little bit every day. Pennsylvania House Legislative Districts have a population of around 64,000. Currently, for a person running for township supervisor in Lower Paxton, they need to have nearly the same financial support behind them as someone running for a state house seat. That can easily run into the tens of thousands of dollars. Big money can make a big difference in campaigning in a second-class township like Lower Paxton. I propose to reduce that reliance on special interests and substantial campaign war chests. Lower Paxton can become a first-class township. That would divide representation in the township into wards. At the current population, with five township commissioners instead of supervisors, first-class status would reduce the representation size to approximately 11,000 instead of nearly 55,000. Our neighbor, Susquehanna Township, with a population of 28,000, has nine wards, each represented by a commissioner. The population of each is just over 3,000. In the fifth ward, the recent winning candidate needed only $1,500. No big money influence there. In addition, with our township-wide supervisors, it's possible for entire portions of the township to be without a supervisor voice, someone who knows the neighborhood, the streets, the people, and the municipality changes they might face. This is not an overnight solution. Moving to first-class status would require study and communication with township residents, neighborhood meetings, and township-wide public meetings, public hearings. The current board could launch the process, but the next board likely will have to bring it to fruition. Prudent research and deliberation will require months, and most appropriately culminate in a ballot referendum, decided on by the people who would be governed by the result. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Purdy. I've also heard that as an option, and I think it is something that we should consider. Also, just in response, the vacancy policy, we have considered that, and are solicitors working on one. So thank you. Any other public comment? Yeah, okay. Whoever wants to step up next, please do.
You can turn the screen on. Thank you.
So we are Ben and Kate Otterbine from 752 South Nyes Road. We just wanted to show up today to thank you all for your work and your communication in the past month since we were last here, to help us address the issues that we are experiencing as a result of the Conway Phil site. We really, really appreciate the township crew jumping in and offering to repair our driveway. Unfortunately, this happened just over a week ago, the day before the driveway was scheduled to be repaired. So in an effort to not waste township money and staff time, we communicated with Larry and the crew and asked them to just defer the driveway repair until after these ENS controls are fixed appropriately and functioning. Again, we appreciate the time and communication. I'll show you in a second here what the site looks like as of this afternoon, or I guess this evening. So here we are this evening. There's been a lot of effort in the past week to seed and mat the site. We really, really appreciate that, although we do still have some concerns because there still is a channel along the silt sock at the border of the property, and there's rip-rap rock dams that DEP wanted to be J-hooks, but said that they would allow as rock dams because the grade was supposed to be changed on the toe of the slope to eliminate that channel and thus cover up those rip-rap dams. So a little bit of concern there because those are still showing with this current stabilization, and they were supposed to be gone. But overall, really grateful to see progress that's happening quickly and quick response to the issues that we're reporting. We are also super appreciative because we received this email from Bill Weaver, where he tells us of the township's commitment to continue repairing our property if ENS issues should continue to arise even after the stabilization that has occurred. And we really appreciate the township's commitment to upholding Chapter 102 and Chapter 170 as well, and repairing the damage that's being caused by this work. So all of that just to say, we'll continue monitoring the site during rain events as we are able. Our primary focus is still to just keep our driveway intact and usable post-construction, and to keep our hayfield farmable and not filled with rock and wetland, to be honest. So anyway, thank you so much for your time and your efforts on all of this. We appreciate it, and we look forward to continuing to work with you to try to make sure that these goals can be achieved. Anything else?
No. Thanks, Ben.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Oh, go ahead, John.
Yes.
Did you want to say something?
No, I just want to say, you know, we've been talking, so I'm kind of glad I see this, and you know, hopefully after this light rain and the extreme heat next week, it will be knee-deep by the weekend.
Fingers crossed.
Yeah. I'm glad to see that.
Yeah, and thank you for keeping in touch with us. It was really helpful to see the emails and the updates along the way, to let us know that we could reach out to you after we speak to staff here. It was really helpful with all the updates. We appreciate it.
And I know there may have been some confusion last week, but again, to the Board of Supervisors, the invite still stands. If anybody wants to come through our driveway to see what's going on, you're more than welcome. Give us a heads up, we're home most days.
Yeah, I did drive it. I did see it.
No, I'm glad you got to see it.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening.
Yes, sir.
I'm Larry Pickens, and I am the Executive Director at the Pennsylvania Council of Churches, and I came to say thank you. We were here last week to share with you a concern that we had around zoning. We are attempting to place a community garden on our site, and there seemed to be some question about whether we could actually install a chain-link fence. And subsequent to last week's meeting, I've been contacted by Amanda Zerby and Nick Garrett from the zoning area, and they have been very helpful. At first blush, it seems as though we don't need any kind of variance, so we're happy about that. So I just want to express appreciation for processing the concern that we have and the way in which staff has responded.
Thank you, Mr. Pickens. We agree. Our community development department is just wonderful, so we appreciate them as well. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other public comment? And again, I just wanted to remind people, these are not on agenda items.
Hello, Keith Shomper. I live at 5530 Old Locust Lane, where the culvert project was just done recently. The water runs underneath Locust Lane, under my property, but the pipe is so high that all the water goes underneath the culvert. I mean, eventually, that's going to fail. And the other side ponds up. On my neighbor's side, which is done beautiful, my side is like a stone-rock quarry from all the stones they put around everything. Prior to that, it was all grass. And now, I sloped my own yard towards that creek, and when it was backfilled prior, and all these big storms, all that dirt, grass, netting that was put down by the township is now in the stream. When it first started out, the excavator was on my property. Nobody notified me. It was parked there for weeks. I did my own investigation, called around, and found out who Lower Paxton bought it from, and he called, and then Larry called me and said, "Well, I thought it'd be fine just to park it there." I said, "Well, it'd be nice if somebody asked me to park it in my yard." So then I couldn't mow my grass. It killed my grass. And then all the ruts from the culvert being placed there, I can't mow it because it's all trenched up from the tires, the culvert. I talked to Public Works the other week when I was off, first week of June, to see if I could have the backfill backfilled where it goes into the creek again, because now my land's eroding even more. And I was told Larry would call me. Never received a call from Larry, and I'm just waiting to see, or if I can show somebody that it's eroding away. And I don't know who to talk about. On Locust Lane, the road's falling apart that's above my house, and it's eroding away my yard up there. Is that like a state issue? Do I have to go to PNDOT about that?
I...
Go ahead.
Yeah, it is. But it's something that we'll coordinate with them, sir, on. I know our Public Works Department is aware of the ongoing issue there, and we suspect that that had some contributing, you know, factors to the project that you are referencing here tonight. So it's all kind of connected. So we will ensure that we reach out to PNDOT on your behalf to kind of have a conversation about that and make sure that we coordinate with you as well in terms of what that answer may be and what may be the plan there.
I mean, on the other side of Locust Lane coming towards here, you can see there's been three cones there for over a year where it's already breaking off. Well, it's breaking off on the other side, on my side now. So, I mean, it's been an issue for a while.
We'll have somebody coordinate with you as to what that conversation looks like.
Okay, and then I guess Larry will be in touch with me as far as backfilling the proper way, so it doesn't erode into the creek again?
Yeah, I mean, I have no personal knowledge of, this is the first time I'm hearing about this, but I will make sure that Larry gets...
Could do my process before I came up here to speak in front of everybody.
Understood. No, I, we will, I'm sure Larry will be, I will contact Larry to make sure that he reaches out to you to clarify that.
All right. Thank you.
Can I just ask, how long was this occurring for, before you reached out?
It's been after, since the culvert was done.
Okay.
It's been after that. Like, the culvert on my side of the property, where the water flows underneath Locust Lane, is a good six inches above where any water even goes into the pipe. It goes under the pipe, makes a pond on the other side. When it gets so much water, water travels back uphill, going out the other side of the pipe. I always thought it was supposed to just travel downhill, but nothing goes in the pipe unless it's a huge storm.
Okay.
I don't know if it was trenched far enough, or the grade was shot right, or...
If you don't mind me asking, I didn't hear your, the address.
5530 Old Locust Lane.
5530 Old Locust Lane, okay. We'll look into it for sure.
All right, thank you.
Yeah, thank you for letting us know. This is the first time we are hearing of this, so we will follow up.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Any other public comment? Yes, sir?
Hi, my name is Albert Banks, 6551 Lighters Lane. I'm a resident of Hodges Heights Neighborhood and the president of the Community Association in that area. Recently, there's been a number of meetings that we've participated in with the township, DEP, to discuss the permit issue, issuance of the compost facility permit. But attached to that, we've received communications dating back to '83 from the township and since, suggesting the other portion of that site, which is the landfill that's now closed, to be monitored for methane gas. And a part of that process was to determine if there was gas seepage into any homes, et cetera. And the township took it upon its own volition at that time, and we have communications suggesting that the township wanted to establish, under DEP's insistence, that these properties, over 30 of them, that's immediately surrounding the site, I think that number's increased since this has been initiated, to establish detectors in the houses. In years earlier, that was all handled by one individual in the township, Ken Schoeff. He's since retired, and that responsibility migrated into a contractual relationship with an HRG, that is the township engineer. And why I'm bringing all this history up is we're at a point where two of the houses in that area have communicated to me that their detectors have gone off. I don't know what that necessarily means, since some of these detectors have been established over 10 years ago. The detectors may be operable defective or something like that, or they could be quite simply detecting gas seepage into their homes. These properties that have the detectors that are making the noise in the respective owner's houses are on opposite ends of the landfill, which poses a concern. So I took the initiative to contact HRG, and I found that the individual there was retired, that would handle the township affairs, and no one called me back who was replacing that person's job. And contacting the township, the Public Works individual Matt, I don't remember his last name, is rather new. He's been here maybe two weeks. He never called me back. And I talked to Nick in your Community Development Division, who made the initiative to least call all the internal offices who might respond to my basic question, what is the township going to do to replace the detectors that may be defective or test them to see if they're detecting gas in those respective homes? Meanwhile, the owners of those homes are still obviously living in them, and they're not sure what is going on in their homes, because you can't smell, et cetera, methane gas. So my point in coming here today was to ask the question to you, to see if anything could be generated in a way of a response to the homes, to actually all of the homes in the area, because some homes have changed hands, and the new owners have no idea about the need for a detector, if a detector was still in their property, or if it's operable, if it's operating correctly in their home. I think the HRG engineer who was working with your Public Works Division at an earlier time on these types of tasks, I did have a conversation with him last year when he was to come into my home, and he told me... a conversation with him last year when he was to come into my home. And he told me a number of things, but one thing he told me, my detector was over 15 years old, and just by the gravity of the age of the detector, the technology has changed. It's more sensitive than those older models, and it should be changed. He never came back, although he made notes or whatever to indicate that I needed a new detector. I don't know if that problem is indicative of problems that are now occurring in these other homes that detectors are responding to something. They're all electric detectors, so there's no battery concern. There's just either malfunction or the detectors are detecting or doing their job. So I just wanted to post that concern. I'd like to, if I could, get someone to respond to, and that was it. Yes?
Thank you very much, Mr. Banks. Do we have any correspondence on this matter, Brad?
First time I'm hearing about it this evening. I will follow up with staff to see who we may have contacted, who has been notified about this issue. Quite some time ago, as per our standing, you know, landfill closure, you know, permit, we had attempted to really get a better handle on the in-home methane gas detectors and had very limited response from residents in that area as to the questions that were posed of them. Number one, you know, may we come into your home to inspect these detectors? Are you interested in a new detector? A series of questions that I'd be happy to help, that I'd be happy to show the board that survey and its results. And like I said, we had very limited response from that, so-
How long ago was that survey done?
I'd really have to look back. It was certainly beyond a year ago. And, but I'll provide that data to you. It's just not coming to mind right here. But, so I'm not sure if these homes particularly were among those homes that did not respond to us, or, I have no idea what's being discussed here, so I'll have to get back to you on that.
Mr. Banks, any insight?
Yeah, if I might reiterate, that process was initiated in 83, prior to anyone here being on this committee. And it was followed up in 83. But here recently, it was supposed to be followed up again to monitor, to test the monitors. And a letter was sent out. And people work, and they weren't home during the daytime when staff made themselves available. And the staff, quote unquote, was HRG, sending out one person to knock on doors. And if he had a response funneled through the township, based on that letter sent out by the township, he would go into that home. If he didn't have a response, because no one was going to be at home between whatever hours, I don't recall, that was posted on the letter, no one responded. And/or people that were in the home saw someone come up to their door, and they had suspicions as to who this person was. And they didn't necessarily either read the letter, or they had no other communication, not verbal, or et cetera. So I think there was a lack of communicating with me or someone else in the township in the neighborhood to escort them in, to make sure that there was some kind of connection for this inspection, if you will. Someone has to go into their house, into their basement, and not everyone is willing to let just anyone in to their home. So I think there was a courtesy issue that wasn't exercised, in my opinion. But I think now, at least the two homes that have already been experiencing the malfunction, if you will, of these detectors, do want to have some kind of response. And we all made calls, and in fact, I called Matt's office earlier today, and I only got as far as his assistant. I don't recall her name, but she indicated, she just wanted the addresses of the homes that I'm speaking about that had the malfunctioning detector. She wouldn't take their address from me. She wanted the person to, the people that are involved in that circumstance to call her and tell her their respective information, their address and contact names and so forth. So I said, "I'll do that," but I'm also someone who received a detector. The detector was making periodic beeping sounds at some point in my own house. And I was about to refinish that area, so I took the detector down since it was irregularly beeping. I thought maybe something irregular was going on with it, but I just unplugged it. I haven't put it back in. But maybe that's the issue that other people are experiencing. Their old detectors are malfunctioning, but I don't know that. I'm not a-
Okay. So maybe we need some additional correspondence.
Madam Chair, members of the board, just to clarify, not to get into a back and forth here, but in January, I just was able to find it, my email, back in January of 2024, a letter went out from the Public Works Department indicating that, "It is our request, you know, to access your home to determine whether or not a detector is present in your home, and if so, whether it is operating properly. Detectors, quote, "detectors that are missing or in need of replacement will be provided and installed at no cost to you by Lower Paxton Township." And it goes on further to state, "Please contact HRG Engineering at phone number to schedule an in-home visit for an evaluation of your methane gas detector." So I'm not sure that a door-to-door wandering surveyor was out there knocking on doors and simply hoping for, you know, somebody to be home. We had asked for a schedule to be made and our technicians to go out to make that inspection. So again, we had really limited luck on that, and I'm not quite sure why. But I think it's a process that we can continue to refine and work on per the comments this evening.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Banks.
Yeah, thank you.
Will be a touch. Is there any other public comment? Mr. Miller?
William Miller, 4311 Crestview. I've addressed this before, and it'll probably have to keep being addressed. The PPL deal with the Verizon deal with the trees over lines, we're having that over at the New Side Cemetery with some overhanging there. It's nothing that we could do. I'm speaking as myself on this and not for the whole committee. But when I'm standing there looking up at the pictures I took, you know, they really need to be, it's a bigger picture for the whole township. These right-of-ways, I feel, the posture should be different by the township to try to come up and, you know, work with them and say, "Look, you gotta keep this stuff trimmed back." The response by those commercial entities was, "Well, you know, that's the homeowner's issue." On Colonial Road, there's a branch still in front of a fire hydrant after a week. I've tried to get it removed. My back's out. I was, you know, for me to cut it, I really didn't feel like going over there and risking anything. I wouldn't call about it, except it's a 20-some-foot log in front of a fire hydrant. I mean, I think that should be a priority anytime. It's in the way. I had a thing with the Windsor the week. I'm trying to advocate for all the homeowners. You have a neighbor, they have a tree. The tree's in bad shape. Everybody knows it's in bad shape. They don't trim it. They don't do anything with it. Falls on your stuff, your house, your car, whatever. This one fell on the power line. For 30-some hours, there were about 40 people without power. It was an old willow, just like your old sugar maples. They love to get hollow. They love to fall over. With another neighbor pumping water out of a sump pump forever, which flows down across the yard, the driveway into the yard, and when it hit the pole, the pole was kind of rotten from all that water. So I know that's a sump pump discharge is a township mandate and so on. The thing is, how much can the township do to be proactive in keeping the right-of-ways of these trees clear? And does anyone on the committees besides a codes officer have the ability to address the issues on a property? You have experts on your, you have a shade tree commission? Do they have that ability? All the trees they planted there by sheets on North Colonial Road, they're getting hit, they're damaged. They raised the sidewalks. They were extremely poor choice, and that should have been vetted on the plans before they were planted. So then sometimes my point is, we create these doggone situations. So, but anyway, you know, it's just the trees are completely out of control. If, my eye would be different than another person's eye, maybe an arborist's eye, but I just see these things over my lifetime coming down. And I don't think people should have to suffer, especially a neighbor with no money when it's not even their tree. This one tree's still laying there after all that stuff. They still haven't, well, it's hard to get people in, but still. So I don't know if you have anything in place for that or, but with the big entities, and I'll end it with this, you know, with Verizon and PPL, to come up with some kind of arrangement where you guys have a whole lot more influence than the homeowner. And I just think as you're driving around, if they would do some of this, then the township crews wouldn't have to do a call out of the fire department for something that probably was, you know, pretty much avoidable through normal maintenance. Again, some people don't know, so inspectors, when they drive around, they're not looking for trouble here in this township, which is a good thing. I mean, they drive around and they responded or complained. But when you see something as obvious, or a township worker sees something that obvious, the best people are your boots-on-the-ground people. They see it all, and perhaps they should have a system by which they can report back to their supervisor, and at least it gets to somebody's desk up here, and they can see that at least it's being done. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Miller. Is there any other public comment? Okay, moving on. Chairman and board members comment.
None here.
All right. Managers report?
I have no report this evening. Thank you.
And there being no old business, we'll move on to new business. The first action item, 8.1, is an action to adopt Resolutions 2025-0601 to 2025-0608, which supports the submission of funding applications to the Dauphin County Local Share Grant Program. Mr. Gottschall.
Yes, Madam Chair, members of the board, consistent with Lower Paxton Township's past practice with regard to the county local share gaming process, during last week's meeting, the board entertained a number of presentations with regard to community grant applications. I had asked each of the supervisors to rank in priority form those various applications. And before the board this evening, our resolutions 2025-0601 through 2025-0608, each number of which corresponds to the rank that it, the application had received from the board members in an average sort of a formulation. And so, once approved this evening, township staff will get over to each of the applicants their signed resolution, as well as a cover letter kind of explaining the township's process and supporting this local application, such that then they can send that as a packet over to the county. So I'd be happy to help answer any questions that you may have.
All right. Is there a motion to approve the adoption of Resolutions 2025-0601 to 2025-0608 that support the submission of the funding applications for the local share grant program?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Is there any public comment or discussion on this item? No? All those in favor, say aye. Aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Okay. Moving on to action item 8.2, which is an action to approve a separation and release agreement. Okay. We're open for a motion on the action to approve a separation and release agreement.
So moved.
We have a first. Is there a second?
Second.
Yep. And now that there's a properly made first and second, we will open the floor for public comment on this issue.
Joe Lindsey, 6244 Overview Lane. Thank you, Madam Chair, for letting me speak. I'm going to be very, very short. Just have a question or two here before I make my comments. Is this for a resignation or a termination?
Madam Chair, Mr. Lindsey.
Oh, I'm sorry.
No problem. My name tag was different tonight, and it surprised me as well. As we do with all personnel matters, I have advised the board strongly to not discuss them publicly.
Then why are we having a public vote on this?
You have to have a public vote on separation agreements.
Well, respectfully, I think the board should be a little bit more transparent. I'm not saying anything hanky-panky's going on here, but it doesn't look good. But I'm going to assume who is going, who is going to be leaving the township, and I'm going to make my comments very, very brief. There was an offer letter back September of 2018 that said, "The position of Township Manager," let me see, it's so small, "is an administrative at-will position and reports directly to the Board of Supervisors." With that said, I go to Black's Law Dictionary, and for those attorneys, know exactly what that is. Black's Law Dictionary's definition of at-will employment is defined as follows: "An employment relationship where neither the employer or the employee can terminate the relationship at any time for any reason or no reason at all, provided it's not an illegal reason." I also would like to read an excerpt of the Class II Township Code under Article 13, Township Manager. "An employment agreement entered into pursuant to this subsection may specify conditions under which a Township Manager would be entitled to severance compensation. But in no event shall an employment agreement guarantee employment through the term of the agreement or confer upon the Township Manager any legal remedy based on specific performance." I hope everybody that's going to be making this decision, or counsel the board on making this decision, has read this, because I think it's very, very important, because the taxpayers, depending on what the magnitude is of this agreement, are going to be paying for this. And I'm going to close by saying this. This position, the last seven years, has done nothing very good for this township. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Lindsey. Is there any other public comment on this action item? Okay. All right, we have a properly made motion and second. All those in favor, say aye. Aye? Any opposed?
Aye.
The motion carries. Moving on to action item 8.3, action to approve a consulting agreement. Is there a motion on the floor?
So moved.
Second.
There's a properly made motion and a second. Is there any public comment on this issue?
I'm going to ask the question, I think, can we have a name?
Again, it's a personnel matter, so I've advised the board not to speak on it publicly. For clarity, I advise that on all personnel matters.
That's a disgrace.
Thank you, Mr. Lindsey. There is a properly made motion and second. All those in favor, say aye. Aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. All right. Item number nine, subdivision and land development, improvement guarantees.
I've reviewed the improvement guarantees with Director Zerby this afternoon, and I- Director Zerby this afternoon and I make a motion to I approve the, I make a motion to approve the improvement guarantees.
Thank you, Supervisor Thompson. Is there a second?
Second.
Any public comment on the improvement guarantees? No. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Item number ten, payment of bills, Lower Paxton Township and Lower Paxton Township Authority.
Having reviewed the various check registers with Ms. Dunlap this afternoon, I make a motion for the Township to pay the bills.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any public comment or discussion? No? All those in favor say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Are there any announcements? From the board?
I do have an announcement. I've been in communication with Cynthia Webster from the school board and I wanted to just make it known publicly that the playground at Mountain View, starting today, won't be available because it's going to be in the process of being upgraded. So it won't be available until sometime in mid-August. From today going forward, it's going to be in the process of being upgraded, so it will not be available.
Any other announcements? I'll just announce that we'll be having another executive session after this meeting to discuss personnel and that our next business meeting is Tuesday, July first. With that, I will ask for a motion to adjourn.
Still moved.
Second?
Second.
Okay. No public comment. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Thank you, everybody, for attending tonight.